Then it's 7:01. Let's call this meeting of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to order. This is an open meeting. This will be a virtual meeting allowed by Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, extending certain provisions of the open meeting round until March 31st, 2025.
Recording in progress.
We are recording. Anyone else who wants to record this open session of a public meeting may do so. However, anyone who wants to record the meeting by any means, including an AI application, must first notify the chair and must not interfere with the meeting. Recording the meeting without notifying the chair is not allowed. So is there anyone else recording the meeting? And if you are, just raise your hand and we'll note that. Hey, there is no one. So let's proceed with the order of business. First, we'll do a roll.
All right, I'm recording. I was trying to figure out how to type it in the chat.
You haven't raised your hand yet. Thanks, Brittany.
Yeah, I'm imagining PCTV is recording as well.
I hope so. We'll take that as a fact. Now we'll do a roll of members present.
Sure. So we do our roll call by municipality alphabetically. So I will say the name of the community and then let's hear first from the delegate if present and then from the alternate if present. First and last name, please. Adams. Alford. Beckett.
Diana Mott, alternate.
You're muted, Peter.
Yeah, I saw he's Peter Krug, delegate.
We have to study our alphabet to be ready, right?
Yes.
Dalton. Egremont.
Mary McGurn, delegate.
Florida. Great Barrington.
Pedro Pachana, delegate.
Malcolm Thicke, alternate.
Hancock. Lanesboro.
Leanne Yinger, delegate.
Lee. We actually heard from Buck, he'll be a little late. Lennox. Monterey.
Laura Mancy, delegate.
Mount Washington. New Ashford. New Marlborough. North Adams.
Kyle Hanlon, delegate.
Peru.
Sam Haupt, delegate.
Pittsfield.
Sheila Irvin, delegate.
Richmond. Sheffield.
Barry Hoy, delegate.
Stockbridge.
Nancy Socia, delegate.
Tearingham.
Amanda Hamilton, delegate.
Washington.
Don Gagnon, delegate.
West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Windsor.
Douglas McNally, delegate.
Super, thank you.
Hey, thank you. The, well, the next order of business is consideration of the minutes for March 21st, I'll look for motion to accept.
Doug McNally, I make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Doug. Second, anybody?
Pedro Pachana, second.
Thanks, Pedro. Any comments or corrections to the minutes? Hey, hearing none. We have to vote by roll. Kate, please.
Communicate.
Righty, we have a fair number of votes. Forgive my informality, I'm going with first names by who's here. Diana.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Pedro.
Aye.
Leanne.
Yes.
Laura.
Aye.
Kyle.
Upstain.
Sam.
Upstain.
Sheila.
Upstain.
Sorry.
Aye.
Nancy.
Upstain.
Dawn.
Yeah, aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Minutes are approved. The next order of business is comments from BRPC delegates and alternates. And remember, this isn't an open discussion on issues. So anyone who have any comments or any statements they'd like to make to the commission?
This is Diana Mott speaking from Beckett. I'm the alternate. And one member of our board was wondering if you had a template or a regulation example for a battery storage facility.
I can get back to you on that, Diana.
Okay.
Is that affirmative, maybe?
Oh, there's, there is material out there that is available.
Okay. Thank you.
This might be a good point to mention Fifth Thursday, which is coming up. What's the deadline for signing up for Fifth Thursday?
Monday, Monday, yeah, Monday, the 20th, please.
Okay. Everybody drum up. Any, any other comments? Hey, are there any comments from the public, members of the public mail for comments at Hey, hearing none. The next order of business is the presentation of the Executive Committee actions, which are taken on the commission's behalf on April 4th and May 2nd. If you read through those several letters that were mentioned in the actions or included in your packet, including one related to comments related to legislation that, about site plan review, which I suggest everyone take a look at. There are also two responses from the ERC, the Environmental Review Committee, that's included in the packet, if you have any questions about those. Any questions about those or any other items that were included in the, in the packet for executive committee actions?
Yeah, just one thing, I don't know, was here later on, two things we should ask to dig a little deeper into in, looking at the data for the Berkshire County, the income inequality took a huge leap. And I was wondering if there's any way to look into seeing if that is something of, a result of long time residents or if it was, since it coincided with COVID, was a product of some very high income people suddenly residing in what used to be second homes? And it, there was also an increase of, you know, people who are self-employed. And I was wondering if that might be something we want to look into before some people panic over that number. Just a comment.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the next order of business is, we're very fortunate to have Andy Cozwell, who's the Mastot's West East Passenger Rail Director, to speak to us today about Compass Rail, which is the, most of us know as the East West or West East Rail. Mr. Cozwell?
Hey, hello, everybody. Is that audio working all right?
Yes, it's working great. Thank you.
All right, well, great. Thank you for having me today. I really appreciate it. And I apologize, I'm in one of those phone booths within the local library, so I have this unusual effect where like the light is upon me. But, so thanks very much for having me and I appreciate the chance to talk about Compass Rail. I imagine that many of you have heard of this concept, this, this vision that we have, that we've recently dubbed Compass Rail. And this is an opportunity, I think, I'd like to take to explain what it is and why we did it. Yeah, because there is a logic. So I apologize if anybody has seen a similar presentation before. I know at least Tom has seen one, because this is, it's a branding, it's something that we're trying to communicate throughout the Commonwealth. So we've had an opportunity to give a similar presentation around the, around the state. So this is really great that we have a chance to come out here to the Berkshire's area to present this. Now, I'm gonna, I'm much more typical using Teams. I'm gonna do my best to share the presentation on Zoom here. How's that look?
If you go into a presentation mode, it'll be fine.
That looks right.
That's perfect, yeah.
All right, great. So Compass Rail is, it's an overarching brand that represents the vision for intercity passenger rail throughout the Commonwealth and beyond. So the intercity rail as opposed to something like commuter rail, commuter rail would be more like MBTA service in Boston where there's a lot of suburban service lines to a downtown economic core or similar to Connecticut's Hartford line that has a frequent all-day service. Since intercity passenger rail is less frequent but faster, longer distance, more express services. So the rail and transit division, which I belong to at Mastot, we manage these intercity services, which is essentially the passenger rail outside of the MBTA system. So a couple of reasons why we put together this vision plan now and really unveiled it last fall. One is we, there's been a real significant investment on the federal side with federal funds available for passenger rail activities. So you may have heard of the bipartisan infrastructure law or the IIJA that was signed in 2021, which really increased available funds, particularly discretionary opportunities that we use to fund rail projects. On the, on the rail side, through the Federal Railroad Administration, really don't have those formula funds that transit operators use, the FTA funds. So typically, they come through discretionary opportunities. So you probably remember back when Governor Baker at the time committed to East West Rail, as it was termed at the time. Now, Governor Haley has certainly demonstrated her commitment to keeping this, this activity going. And we want to be active and go after these discretionary opportunities. So by doing Compass Rail, we're able to present a full story on what Massachusetts is trying to do and show that these are not one-off projects, but they build to a grander vision throughout the entire Commonwealth and beyond to neighboring states. So that was one piece. And the second piece about why we're doing this is because East West Rail, now what we call West East Rail, it means different things to different people. And we want to clarify how we want to get to that end vision and what sort of projects are going to build to that. So Compass Rail is a program of projects. So I'm going to start first here. And so I imagine some of you are familiar with the East West Passenger Rail Study that was published in 2021. Now, they looked at service between Boston and Pittsfield. And this study, while it didn't give a finalized preferred alternative recommendation, it did have several, there's three alternatives to be considered for future, future implementation, but they all had some things in common. Like, we knew for sure, we want a rail service between Boston and Pittsfield. Like, some of the alternatives looked at busing segments, that was excluded from, from the three alternatives. Now, we also know that similar stations, Pittsfield, Springfield, Worcester-Boston, existing stations, two proposed stations, Palmer and Chester, were included. So we have a jumping off point and we intend to advance this, this West East Rail. But it's not going to be a Boston to Pittsfield service on day one. So we want to explain how we're going to get here, but without, we're trying to be clear that there's not going to be a day where we say Boston to Pittsfield service starts today, look for the Pittsfield sign at South Station because you're heading west. So before we kind of get into that grander vision in the West East Rail services, Compass Rail, it's a combination of existing services and proposed services. So the existing services right now are primarily on this north-south corridor, the knowledge corridor within Massachusetts, from New Haven primarily up to Greenfield. These include the Vermonter. The Vermonter is a one-day, one round trip a day service between St. Albans up in Vermont, near the Canada border down to Washington. And then there's the Amtrak Hartford Line services, the Valley Flyer from Greenfield to New Haven. There is a lot of demand on these services. It's, it's exceeding a lot of our expectations. We are well beyond our pre-COVID numbers and that's something that not many services can say right now. The Western Massachusetts is really demonstrating a demand for passenger rail. And really, a lot of these trips that we're seeing, most of the growth, it's coming with trips from Massachusetts to New York. It's not, it's less so for shorter trips like Springfield to Hartford, to Springfield to New Haven. And then we have the seasonal Berkshire Flyer service that has, has been running for two years now and will begin again on June 21st for this season. So the West East Rail services are comprised of two proposed routes. One, the inland route that's here in red. This is a Boston to New Haven service through Springfield. This is the, we have a grant right now for early actions. This is a route that we're going to be implementing in the near term. And the Boston to Albany route is a second corridor that we're advancing together with the Federal Railroad Administration and Amtrak. So I'm going to get into these a little more, deeper into the presentation, but I want to demonstrate that this, these West East Rail services, these ones are the proposed ones and we have strategies for implementation on each one of these corridors. So together, and you see how I boxed it out here, this is what Mastot is proposing and advancing as West East Rail. So West East Rail, it's a, it's a vision. It's not synonymous with the East West Rail plan from 2021, but West East Rail is really from Boston to Albany and it's made up of multiples, different routes. And, I'm sorry. So I think that's important to point out that West East Rail is, it's a vision, it's, it's not a route itself. So inland route and Boston to Albany, those would be more likened to like a Vermont or a Valley Flyer. But certainly, West East Rail is a normal feature that we continue to use and it's, it's, it's more of a, an aggregate of multiple projects. So here is the Compass Rail vision map, which really demonstrates the combination of these existing north-south services with the proposed West East services. And just to touch on why the, the extent of the Boston to Albany service was pushed west to Albany, it's really about the characterization of what intercity passenger rail is. So it's more typical that an intercity service would be connecting two or more metro areas and really focus on those hubs where they can be connecting intermodal services. So by, by extending our extents to Albany, you have additional connectivity from Albany and it also gives that additional access from Pittsfield to points west and, to Pittsfield from points west. So and also one thing I want to point out is that, that you might be familiar with Amtrak's Lake Shore Limited, so that's an existing daily West East trip between Boston and Chicago through Pittsfield. Now, this service is not on the map and that's because it's part of Amtrak's core service. All of these services that you see here on the map, these are state-supported services. So while they're either Amtrak-operated or proposed to be Amtrak-operated, they, they, they're not a part of Amtrak's core services. So like Lake Shore Limited, for example, Mastot does not contribute to that operation of that service, nor does it contribute to the Northeast Regional or the ASL services that are on the northeast corridor between Boston and Washington. Here is a demonstration of what we believe a 2045 service could look like for Compass Rail. So this is very, very similar, using the same colors of the previous slide, together with the Lake Shore Limited showing East West services and an estimate on what type of frequency we think that we could achieve within this timeframe. And you'll notice that the inland route in red is three round trips, Boston to New Haven. From Boston to Albany, there's two proposed Boston to Albany trips. That's not finalized, these are estimates that were done before this planning effort. So this is sort of a, like a baseline that we have to work on right now. And just very quickly, this is what the Compass Rail service is grayed out. It shows that intermodal connectivity. So in Boston, there's an extensive MBTA commuter rail service and again, the northeast corridor services that are shown in green and also down Easter from Maine that connects into Boston. And this really demonstrates that by extending our proposed service from Boston all the way to Albany, that there's really a lot of access once you get to Albany as far as routes that will extend as far as Montreal or Burlington, Vermont, and west to Buffalo, Toronto, as well as south to New York City. So there's a lot of things happening right now that are advancing these projects. And to get, to give a kind of brief overview, first I'll start with Springfield Union Station. There's a, a current grant we have right now, a federal discretionary grant from the Federal Railroad Administration to advance the design and environmental work of a track reconfiguration and new layover space. Now, this is really to enable additional capacity so we can move more trains, but also on the north-south services, there's some really awkward movements that currently occur for, for through trains and, and really that's because the platforms at Springfield, they're oriented east-west. And so if you have a north, north-south service coming in and you kind of have to pull into the east-west platform and then pull back out onto the main line and then go ahead north. So this project is designing an alternative that will create more efficient movements, but it also gets some of the passenger services out of the way of the freight, freight traffic and really, really creates some, some opportunities to, to increase frequencies within the area. The in red, that's the inland route, we recently received over $100 million from, from the FRA, Federal Railroad, to establish two daily round trips and that, that project is ongoing right now. And the Boston Albany corridor, it has been accepted into the Federal Railroad Administration Corridor ID program. And that, that's pretty exciting. I want to spend a couple of slides at the end of this talking about that because that really shows a partnership from the, from the US DOT to advance this corridor and, and to make it, to make it happen. A couple of other things we have going on right now is we, we have funds set aside to design and construct capacity improvements, so to increase the efficiency in the room for additional trains somewhere in the Pittsfield area. We also are advancing, planning a design for a new station in Palmer. That's already begun, that started in January. We've met with a steering committee and really started digging into alternatives of sites. And I just want to mention this, this other project just north of Hartford. While it's not a Mastot project, it is a CET, Connecticut DOT project, they've received over $100 million to improve their trackage between New Haven and Springfield, really in that Hartford, West Hartford area. That's their project, but for sure, that's, that's a benefit to Massachusetts riders that do travel the corridor, particularly something like this inland route or the existing services that you see in green, to, to limit the, any kind of conflicts that will happen on the corridor in slow service. So just thinking a minute with this, this recent award we received, this was, I want to say the second biggest award in the nation when, when this came out for, this is called CRISI, C-R-I-S-I, that's the acronym for the grant program that awarded these funds. $108 million on the federal side. We are contributing, Massachusetts is contributing $18 million and Amtrak is contributing $9 million as a part of the match for that project. So, so really the bulk of the work for this project is to improve capacity, just track work in between Springfield and Worcester. And that's really where there's a lot of conflicts right now, there's a lot of areas where there's only one track. There's used to all be two tracks. And right now, and a lot of it's been ripped up in between in the, in the past decades and we're really trying to reestablish double track where would be most beneficial. We are, we've had a lot of success over the last month or so, I think towards the end of March, early April, we completed our service model. That's like the base, like first foundational step towards implementing this project. Because that service model, once we're able to simulate the movements along the corridor, we can start to test what would happen if we had different track infrastructure in place. And so that's given us real insight into what projects we're going to build with this federal grant. And once we have that in place, then we can start designing it and then we can, and build it. So the, the plan is to design that track work, begin this summer, and then by spring of 2027, we'll be constructing, finishing two years later. And by 2029, we'll have two daily round trips between Boston and New Haven, creating those extra trips between Springfield and Boston primarily. So that model, that like, that's a really critical model because that's the same thing, it's the same process that we're already using to, to identify what the project is going to be in the Pittsfield area. For anybody that is familiar with the Berkshire Flyer Service, the on-time performance was not great. The schedule works on paper, but in the Pittsfield area, particularly west of Pittsfield towards Albany, there's a, there's a large or a long single-track section. And when things go wrong, they go really wrong. And a lot of those trips were, were late arriving or late departing. So we are looking to, to use that model to identify the infrastructure that will mitigate a lot of those delays. So getting towards the end of this presentation, I wanted to touch on this Corridor ID program. So I mentioned that the Boston Albany corridor, that blue line from Boston out to Albany via Springfield and Pittsfield, it was accepted into the Corridor ID program, the new program that the Federal Railroad Administration has just established. Our acceptance was, we're part of the inaugural class. This is maybe not at the same scale, but it's akin to back in 1956 with Interstate Highway Act, establishing that national network for highways. The United States Department of Transportation right now is looking to establish that intercity passenger rail network and really invest in them. And whereas a lot of discretionary grants is a community or a state pitching their idea to the US DOT and looking to be funded, we are advancing this vision in partnership with the US DOT. So it's a multi-step process and so far, we've been accepted into the program. We've been awarded a nominal amount, $500,000, to establish a scope of work for a service development plan. That service development plan is what's going to identify the true frequencies that we think that we can match, the number of trains between Boston and Albany. that we think that we can match, the number of trains between Boston and Albany. It's going to really establish a lot more, a lot of like the governance structure, the operator, which we assume at this point would be Amtrak, and the phasing, the implementation, but also a corridor project inventory. And that's the project list that we need. So the infrastructure needed to achieve the service that we want to have. Once we establish our project list, it gets thrown in with all of the other states or all the other corridors' project lists. And the FRA has an intention to establish a funding mechanism specifically to fund those projects. So this is, even though that we're in a planning phase right now, we are on a pipeline to get this project implemented and have a service between Boston and Albany. And FRA and Amtrak are partners in this. And just to finish, I want to show that Massachusetts, there's actually a lot of activity in this program. So in blue, you'll see a more accurate representation of that Boston to Albany corridor. In green, that's the Vermont corridor, which Vermont D-Trans, Vermont Transportation Agency, has also been accepted into the Corridor ID program with FRA to build out the Vermont corridor all the way to Montreal. Between Springfield and Hartford, Connecticut has been accepted into the program. And then on the east side, so from Boston north, the Down Easter has also been accepted as the corridor. So each one of these corridors is going to be advancing through this project process. And we see a lot of opportunity to see some near-term, relatively speaking, near-term advancement of these services. So I know I laid out a ton there, and I hope I wasn't speaking too fast. But I'm happy to go back to any slide or to answer any questions that anybody might have right now.
Doug has his hand up.
Yeah, you made a reference to single rail sections. It's kind of like when a bridge goes out and on a road, you have one lane and everything backs up. Does this plan actually eliminate any sections where there is single lane? Because if we have single track anywhere between freight and the regular passenger transport, it's not going to work. Are they actually going to eliminate, are there going to be two tracks everywhere in this plan?
I don't anticipate that. I mean, to do that, for one, we would have to establish what our service goals were. So I think it's likely that we can achieve our service goals without investing that much in the track infrastructure. And I'll use an example right now for that inland route that we are advancing with the track work between Worcester and Springfield. About 45 miles of that 55-mile section is single track. To get those two daily round trips that we anticipate operating by 2029, we are currently looking at around three or four segments of track that are about three or four miles. So it might not be necessary to achieve the full double tracking. And really, that's a huge expense to pursue that type of infrastructure project, particularly if it goes beyond our service needs. So long story short, I don't anticipate a full double tracking of the entire corridor to be pursued in the near term.
What you're saying then is that you would have some intermediate sections where there would be double tracks so trains could pass? Because if one freight train's late on a hundred miles stretch, you're stuck.
Yeah, so particularly using that simulation model as developed, that's where we look for these more strategic locations where we could have those trains pass each other. And there are, based on the locations of where freight yards are located or where there is like crossovers, like where the New England Central crosses, the Boston-Albany corridor in Palmer, there's a logic to where those double-track sections can be more beneficial. So I totally get your point, and there's certain to be conflicts as long as there are single-track sections. But the strategy right now would be to pursue those areas that have the most benefit to us to achieve the service.
And sorry to talk to you. In Europe, where they have the high-speed train services, they give priority to passenger on time. In the United States, I believe, priority is given to freight. Is that true?
I think there's a lot of examples of, sure. Amtrak's on-time performance in their long-distance network suffers quite a bit from operating on freight-owned lines and being beholden to those freight schedules. CSX owns this corridor between Worcester to Albany and they dispatch it. And so for sure, there's scenarios where a train will be, a passenger train will be waiting on a freight train to pass through a single-track section. But I will take a moment just to point out that the partnership with CSX has really been great on this project. We see a lot of benefit to our future projects. And really, the Federal Railroad is looking at what we've done so far on that inland route to use as a model elsewhere in the country is that Amtrak, state, and freight sort of framework for working these projects through. So yeah, I see your point. And there's certainly going to be difficulties when balancing the priorities of both the passenger and freight. But in general, I think that we're in a good place right now in trying to mitigate those issues.
Thank you. I hope it works, but if it continues that freight has priority, you're going to have a lot of frustrating customers.
Go on, take it.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Andy. You just addressed what my follow-up question to Doug was going to be, and that is, to what extent CSX is cooperating? And is it substantive cooperation, you think? Or will there be obstacles?
I mean, substantive, without a doubt. I mean, that model that I described, CSX has been a very close partner in making sure that happens. And this project is happening due to their flexibility and cooperation. And I'm not sure, you know, the exact process and framework for moving beyond this inland route. But CSX has been very vocal about their support for advancing our passenger objectives. So I feel optimistic right now working with them.
And just really quickly, I would support more than two additional trains between Albany and Boston, South Station, I presume.
South Station, yeah, that's an expectation for an eastern terminus. I'm sorry, you said you support more than two round trips?
More than two additional trains.
Yeah, the that service development plan, that comes as a part of this Corridor ID, that's going to be the real, that's where we're really going to dig in and look at what frequencies are appropriate for these particular metro areas. You know, when east-west passenger rail study was happening, it was very much a study, and it did not leave that final alternative. We're at a point with this service development plan, because we're a part of this pipeline, that this is real, like we're kind of laying down our chips and saying that we're going to advance a service. So we're going to try to be very specific about what we think we can achieve through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Roger? I understand from this that if all this works out, Amtrak would actually operate all three of the Boston to Albany line services. Is that right?
Yeah, so based on that estimate being that the two states supported and then their own long distance.
Right. Do you have any sense of what the travel time would be between South Station and Pittsfield? Whoa, how long would it be?
I mean, it's very hard to say right now because part of that service development plan, we're going to have to make trade-offs. And part of that is going to be what type of infrastructure investments are we willing to commit to achieve what outcomes, whether it be travel time or frequency? So that's really where this is all going to shake out. Without a doubt, the goal is going to be to, similar to like where we're going with this inland route, to see where we can alleviate sharp curves that slow down the travel time and look for those areas like double tracking that reduce the need to slow and to avoid conflicts and meets. So it is a goal to reduce the existing travel time, but what those numbers are, it's very soon to say.
I would just like to add that, you know, an awful lot of trips here are from some, they start from someplace other than Pittsfield. Like I live in Williamstown. There are a lot of people who live in South County who would like this service. So they've got to figure out how much time it would take to get to Pittsfield. And then in my case, I frequently go to Cambridge, Mass., which, you know, that involves an MTA trip from Harvard Square or Alewife to South Station. That service is often poor. So and then other people would probably want to go to some of the suburbs around on Route, well, I-95 or 128. And I noticed there does seem to be one suburban station in the Boston suburbs to the west. What is that? Is that Wellesley or Natick or what?
These dots here, so that represents like Back Bay and Framingham.
Back Bay and Framingham, yeah, okay. I just want to say, this is not your, it's not your fault, but it is a problem in that the routes that people need to plan for are just a lot more complicated from Pittsfield Station to South Station. And in many cases, it simply is a lot faster to drive. So that's basically going to be a factor in your market. So you need to think about that. But I don't know what you can do about it, but it is a fact of life. It needs to be taken account of and projecting how effective this will be. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, and I think you're exactly right. And I know Tom and Anusha, we've recently been in discussions beyond just us about that last mile. What do you do when you arrive at the station and how do you get to your end destination? And it is a tough nut to crack.
Yes, but you know, I had experience commuting in and out of Chicago on their train system. And it was so coordinated with their loop local system and so on that to Roger's point, if you figured your time to get from your home to where you can catch the train, plus the time from when you got from the train to your office on the loop, you have to take into account the fact that it's going to take you time to park your car in Boston and get from your home to the train station in Pittsfield. And often, it really worked out that, given the fact that not having to drive and sitting on a train where you could do some work and so on and so forth, was greatly more beneficial. I mean, I just absolutely loved commuting into Boston and to Chicago on the trains. It was just so much different than the agony I went through commuting from suburban New Jersey into New York City by driving. So there's a quality of the transportation also. But I think Roger's absolutely right. You just have to make sure that you have a whole plan. Because I think the Berkshire Flyer may die because there's no last mile working.
Andy, is the Down Easter a model at all for the kind of service you're preparing? And is there any contention between freight travel on the Down Easter and passenger traffic?
Well, whether it's a model is a good question. I mean, it's a very successful service. And it's a different type of service too, where it's not that same metro-to-metro that we're looking at right now. I mean, the service development plan will dig into some of this. I don't know how familiar you've been with the Western Mass Passenger Rail Commission, but this issue of governance was really their primary topic. You know, the Down Easter has an authority, NEPR, being the operator of the service contracting with Amtrak as their operator. The commission in Western Massachusetts made a recommendation that this service would be managed through Mastod, which would not be a specific authority for Western Massachusetts. So whether or not NEPR would be a model particularly for this, there's obviously a difference of opinions with some folks. So not a one-for-one model, I wouldn't say. And your question on the freight passenger impacts, you know, I wish I could speak to that more, and I really, I don't know the answer to that. I apologize.
That's all right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your thoughtful answers. Any other questions? So very informative. Thank you very much. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name at the beginning.
Oh, yeah, no problem. And you know what, Tom, I was down in my basement this week. I know I have a picture of me intern at BRPC, like holding up some road tubes. And I couldn't find the picture. I wanted to end my last slide with that photograph. Unfortunately, I was on it. But if I find it, I'll email it out to the group.
Yeah, we would love to see it. And I want to thank you too, Andy. This has been great. So very much appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that was very good. Now, but we'll proceed to the next order of business, which is the vote to authorize the BRPC chair to vote to approve the FY 2025 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Program at the May 28, 2024 MPO meeting. Anusha, were you going to talk about that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll share my file so I can. So can everyone see the file? Good. Map? Thank you. So Transportation Improvement Program tip. It's a five-year document. It's an implementation plan for the infrastructure improvement in Berkshire County. So but it's done every year. So it's like right now, we're working on 25 to 29 plan. This plan, as the chair said, it has been released by the MPO for the 21 days public comment period. And the MPO is meeting on May 28 to endorse the document. I'll briefly go through the tip process or what the projects are in this five-year plan. Tip process typically starts like early in the year. We do the solicitation for the projects from the towns, for the projects which has already been through the PRC, that's a project review committee. And then the project that we receive, we do have a criteria for evaluating the projects. We use that, and then we prioritize the projects. We come up with the different scenarios presented to the MPO, and the MPO selects which scenario to go with. And the complete document is prepared, and it's released for the public comment. So this year for the 2025-29, unfortunately, we don't have any like new projects using our regional target funds because for the project cost has increased a lot significantly. And we haven't received like it's a level funding for the first four years. It's only the last year we get the new funding. And again, in the last, if you remember, for the 24-28 plan, for the 2028, the Dalton-Dubson Road was starting in 2028 and completing in 2029, which means we are already identified with 2029 money. So with all those things happening, but we've So with all those things happening, um, but we we managed to put all the projects that were in the tip uh, to be in the twenty twenty-five and twenty-nine document. Saying that, uh, again, those uh, other projects I talked about are using our regional funds. But we do have like project, all the federal money that we receive for its infrastructure improvement uh, for the Berkshire County has to be identified in this document. So far, um, for the five, next five years implementation plan, uh, we have seventy-three projects for the Berkshire County. Um, I can make this thing um, math bigger, so everyone can see that. So uh, we have seventy-three projects identified for the Berkshire County for next five years implementation, which includes uh, twenty of bridge projects at the cost of hundred and forty-three million, nine hundred, four thousand, seven hundred, eighty, which is almost uh, one forty-four uh, million for the bridges, twenty bridges in Berkshire County. And for the highway projects, we have twenty highway projects improvements uh, for the next five years at the cost of hundred and um, hundred and one, hundred and one point five million. And we do have bike trail, there are two bike trail projects. Uh, I'll go through it. Uh, even the bike trail projects, just the two projects, it's at the sixteen million, sixteen point three. So it's a lot of money for doing any kind of infrastructure improvement work. And for the transit, um, it does say thirty-one projects, because it has a different project like buying the replacement vehicles. And for the operational, uh, they have the budget of eighty million uh, to do uh, for the next five years. So overall total for seventy-three projects in Berkshire County, it's a price tag of two hundred eighty million, almost two hundred eighty million uh, for next five years of implementation. So the map out here uh, shows um, the projects um, that have been identified in this twenty-five, twenty-nine document. Line represents the highway projects, the dot represents the bridges, uh, plus sign uh, the intersections and the dash lines are bike trail projects. And the different color code is for the different year of implementation. Um, and it's laid uh, on top of the EJ area, criteria easy area for the Berkshire County. So we know if all the projects are. And this map shows you all the projects are distributed throughout the Berkshire County for next five years. Uh, it's not one particular, like just a Pittsfield. Uh, if you see, all the projects are like in both North, South and the Central Counties. I'll briefly go through some projects um, through North, Central and then South. Uh, so for the twenty-five, twenty-nine document, uh, in North Adams, we have Ash- uh, Ashland Street Improvement, uh, part of the 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 highway project and also Route Eight resurfacing or uh, uh, preservation project on Route Eight. And we also have a bike trail project, um, uh, the Ashawalta Cook Extension to Hodges Cross Road from where it ends right now, uh, to Hodges Cross Road. And for the intersection for the, there is a one on Route Seven in Williamstown, that's at the um, uh, Graylock, um, it's called the Graylock Regional High School, intersection of Route Seven. So we're doing the improvement at that intersection. And also in Linsborough, we do have um, the resurfacing of Route Seven and also includes the sidewalk, uh, um, adding a sidewalk inserted sections of that um, in the area. Uh, those are are the projects and there are like few bridge projects in Savoy, Clutzburg, Adams. Um, and North Adams has a big ticket item on that, um, the big uh, bridge project in North Adams. Um, and then like uh, in Central County, in Pittsfield, um, we have, make it slightly bigger, I think, that will. So in Pittsfield, we do have um, quite a few projects there, uh, mostly all on East Street Corridor. So we do have a section of East Street from uh, M Street to Lyman Street, programmed in that five year, um, five years. And then we also have a railroad section, um, improvement. And then uh, uh, we also have a, um, i- it's a Pittsfield Dalton, um, it's it's a Dalton project, but it uh, it benefits both Pittsfield and Dalton, uh, Dalton Divison Road. Uh, that too is identified in the Central uh, County. And we do have few bridge projects in Pittsfield and there is a bridge project in Hinsdale. Uh, moving south, um, we do have um, many bridge projects identified in different towns, uh, including Washington, Lee, Beckett, uh, Great Barrington, Monory, Sandersfield, oh Sheffield, not Sandersfield, and in Otis. And also we have two intersection projects. Um, one is a safety improvement. Uh, both of them are mostly the safety improvement. Uh, one is in downtown Lee, um, Route Twenty and Park Street. That intersection will have a road tree, so that's um, high accident location. And again, on Route Twenty in Lennox, we have Route Twenty at Slunket Street. Uh, that's an intersection improvement project. And also in Lee, we do have a bike trail project, um, on one or two and the coming uh, palace with um, uh, the river there, um, behind the pri- like old Price Shopper, uh, that area. Uh, it's uh, bike trail projects out there. And then um, in South, oh, um, in Lee, we do have a resurfacing project uh, on Route Twenty-two, uh, from Lee all the way to Beckett Town Line. And uh, we have couple of um, bridge projects that I said. And the other major uh, highway project is in town of Aggramon. Uh, it's a Mount Washington Road, uh, so that will be completed uh, in this five-year uh, part of using our tip funds. So as I said earlier, uh, overall, like tip has a regional targets, which the MPO prioritizes, but there are projects identified and paid through the state funds and the federal funds. So there are many projects, a total of seventy-three projects at the price tag of two hundred eighty million dollars. Um, is there any question? And if you have any question later on too, please let me know, so I can help you out with the what the tip is and how the towns could be involved. And uh, uh, we are doing a presentation at the hi- um, um, the highway, um, the meet, like the highway, uh, I don't know what's the name, uh, it's called, uh, on June twenty-seven, the Highway Department, they meet. They have a regular regional meeting, so we are presenting that.
Highway Superintendent's Association.
Oh, right. Yes, yes. Uh, thank you. And uh, BRPC will be sending a tip survey, because even though like we do have this uh, grant, uh, like tip and we could fund the project, uh, we haven't getting many projects, the towns are not um, submitting projects through the PRC Committee so that we could, they could be identified in the tip. We want to understand what's the problem, why like towns are not using the tip fund for their um, the projects to, they do get the chapter ninety money to it for the improvement, like um, maintenance work, but if it's a price, like a high price tag, um, they can't fund through a chapter ninety. So they need to like use some other funds. So we are try reaching out to the towns to understand um, how we can help them, uh, what, um, so what the issue is. So that will be going out next week too. Uh, yes, Doug.
Yeah, first of all, I'm very pleased to see that despite what you just said, a lot of the smaller towns have actually accessed these funds. But in answer to your question, it's the same problem that we've talked about many times, you and I, and and I talked to Tom. Little towns don't have anybody who has the capability of filling out all these applications to to compete for these grants. So it it may, it may be that we want to let the highway superintendents know that they could reach out to you and and get some help. Um, these these guys didn't go to Harvard. They're great guys. They know their business, but their business is running grants.
Yes, that's our intention. Uh, that's what we have been advocating for that. But it seems like some of the towns do, like I do get emails from them saying that they are in the process and what, uh, how we can help. But that's what we want them to know, like we are here to help them. So that's intention of uh, doing the survey and also getting, reaching out to the highway superintendent meetings, so.
Yeah, the the Western Mass Highway Superintendent's Association kind of operates out of Springfield, the local one. Uh, isn't as robust, but it might be worthwhile trying to actually host uh, uh, a a local meeting in in Pittsfield of the Berkshire County guys to to say, hey, look, we're here to help.
So this is the local meeting on June twenty-seventh. I think it's going to be in Dalton, so.
Thank you.
And and we do have a, uh, like we, every year, we try to do a workshop on how would the, on the tip process, but um, we didn't have much participation on that either, so um, yes, we are trying our best to reach them.
I, you know, uh, it's it's like, yeah, chasing cats, you know, herding cats with these guys, they're so busy, they don't have time, but they really, you know, they really need to know that there's help out there. And I think a lot of them just don't realize, realize it's available.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other question?
Yeah, um, yes, this is Sari uh, from Sheffield. Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Can you just repeat uh, when that meeting is in Dalton, so that I can make sure our um, highway superintendent knows?
Uh, it's on June twenty-seventh.
And no, but how do we find, how do I give him a link or something to?
Uh, once I have, once I have that information from uh, the department, like uh, I will forward it to you. How does work? Because I I just know like it's that day, but I I haven't received the agenda or the time yet, so.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks very much.
Great. Well, this um, uh, if there's no further questions, this requires a vote to to authorize the chair to uh, 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 vote for this plan at the MPO meeting.
I move to authorize the BRPC chair to vote to approve the twenty twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine tip.
Thank you, Sam. Have a second?
Second, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, um, are there any other questions or discussion? Pretty topic.
Thank you.
Hey, hearing none? Uh, oh, Diana, do you have something?
Um, I just wanted to say I I, aye. If you want, if we're doing a roll call vote, I'll say aye. If you're not, I'll mute myself.
Thanks, you got it started.
Okay.
Yeah, Diana, thank you. Peter?
Sure.
Aye.
Mar- Mary?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Laura? I think she might have had to leave already. She had another meeting. Or Mancy? Yep. Uh, Kyle? Kyle, if you hear me, you can come back. Sam?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry. Aye. Nancy?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Don?
Yes.
Roger?
Aye.
Douglas?
Yes.
Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, the next order of business is a vote to authorize the BRPC chair to vote for, uh, to approve the October first, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five Unified Planning Work Program, U- the UPWP at the June twenty-fifth, um, um, MPO meeting.
Uh, you know, we learned to allow for discussion, I'll make a motion that we authorize.
All right, we have the motion on board. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Um, Pete, are you uh, in charge of this or is this?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes uh, with this group to provide them with an overview, uh, and more information in regards to the uh, twenty twenty-five Unified Planning Work Program. Uh, this is an annual document that MPOs are required to uh, prepare. And essentially, um, it can be considered sort of as an outline of our work activity. Uh, and it also is accompanied with um, an estimate of time and a corresponding budget. The Unified Planning Work Program consists of four, I I refer to them as elements or areas. Um, the first one uh, is focused on the certification documents and the overall administration uh, of the MPO and its related activities. Um, and within that particular element, uh, we have five tasks that are um, identified here. Uh, the other area i- is technical support, uh, things such as GIS, data analysis, uh, traffic and travel data collection, uh, modeling and uh, pavement management activities, uh, really fall within that area. Uh, the third area, uh, we refer to as our planning studies. And uh, these are really the 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 activities that, you know, tend to change over time, uh, that really reflect some of the interests, if you want to call it, uh, of the region and where, you know, our our activities are going to focus. And then last but not least, we have uh, sort of a catch-all area. Um, we entitle uh, other activities where, you know, we focus on transportation and land use planning activities, uh, local technical assistance as they relate to uh, transportation. Um, scenic byways is another area that we focus on. And um, you know, as we just heard, uh, rail continues to be a a big interest here in Berkshire County. Uh, so we've got a task that allows us to really focus or dedicate our staff time to that. And then uh, something that, you know, is also important, um, you know, outreach and coordination uh, is another task activity. Um, really, I want to spend just a couple of minutes kind of highlighting some of the the, I don't know, I would say the more um, interesting things um, that we'll be focusing on. Bicycle and pedestrian planning continues uh, to be something that, you know, uh, there's a lot of interest in here in Berkshire County. Uh, we've got the Alsh- Alshawalta Cook Rail Trail, uh, that we, you know, continue to plan for as well as construct. Um, and under this task, you know, uh, we got a lot of time devoted to these types of activities. Um, I think most uh, of the group is familiar with uh, a grant that the city of North Adams received, referred to as the Reconnecting Communities Grant. And we are gonna be, you know, actively involved in that planning initiative with them. And then obviously, um, through this task in the UPWP, it provides, you know, us the time to 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 focus on those activities. I think everybody is familiar with Complete Streets and we continue to assist uh, our member communities uh, on those efforts. Uh, the state also has a Safe Streets and Roads for All program that's continuing on. And then at the federal level, there's an Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program, which is a grant that uh, provides for planning activities. And we'll be working with a number of communities to uh, do more in terms of the actual planning for the Alshawalta Cook Trail through uh, Pittsfield, uh, Lennox and then down into Lee. Something new that um, is come about um, in the Stockbridge in in Lennox area is a concept of a uh, of a walking path and trail system uh, around Tanglewood and the cultural institutions. Uh, just a day or so ago, we received word from uh, Mastod that they're going to provide us access to some unexpendable monies uh, to conduct the feasibility study. So uh, but this task will allow us to be involved in that and more so provide the project management necessary uh, to oversee uh, that. Um, again, you know, the Adventure Trail uh, up in North Adams and Williamstown, uh, connecting uh, two Adams. Uh, there's a raise grant, and if we are successful in receiving monies, uh, we can be in involved in that effort and furthering that. And then uh, as I just mentioned, uh, through the uh, the ATIP program, uh, we've got, you know, uh, a desire uh, to to move forward with uh, more a desire, uh, to to move forward with, uh, more planning, uh, on the Alshewalta Cook Rail Trail Extension. Um, through this task, we are also, uh, involved in the Berkshire Bike Path Council, uh, the Bike North Berkshires, uh, Bicycling Group, as well as the Western New England Greenway. Um, and, you know, one thing that you may also have noticed is that, um, uh, Nick Russo from our staff has done a great job of promoting, uh, May in terms of its Bike Month, and, uh, there's a lot of activities that are going on. You may have noticed some of those, um, in the media. And, um, this is the task that, um, allows for that to happen. Uh, another thing that is, um, of very, uh, much interest to the region, uh, is improving transit. Uh, we also have, uh, recently received word that we are going, uh, to have access, uh, to funds to conduct a feasibility study related to microtransit along with, um, developing an implementation plan. Uh, we're very excited about that and, um, and that's afforded through this task. Uh, we're going to also continue, uh, working with BRTA, uh, monitoring various transit technologies such as rideshare software. Uh, BRTA also has a a great interest in hydrogen technology to fuel their buses. And, um, this task, you know, affords for that. Um, Special Studies is really a collection of, um, uh, transportation planning studies that, um, we we feel are necessary and can result in providing a benefit, uh, to the transportation system here in Berkshire County. Um, we're proposing a First Street Corridor Study. Um, we also get involved in, uh, performing regional bottleneck analyses. Uh, as I'd mentioned earlier, um, we want to spend more time working with BRTA and and looking at, uh, a plan related to hydrogen fuel and transitioning them in that direction. So we'll be working with them on that. And then, uh, another study that we believe can have benefit is looking at a commuter rail line, uh, utilizing the existing, uh, Houstonic line from Pittsfield to Point South. Uh, we feel that there could be some some benefit there. Uh, safety is another area that we feel is an important, uh, thing, um, for obvious reasons. Uh, we are, uh, currently, um, involved with, uh, a Safe Streets and Roads for All study effort to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. Um, that is going to wrap up towards the end of this calendar year. Uh, there will be recommendations in there and, uh, and we want to further those efforts of implementing, um, those recommendations to derive, uh, the benefits of safer roads and safer streets. Uh, climate change and resiliency is, you know, something that, um, there's a lot of interest in both at the state and and regional effort. Um, carbon reduction, um, you know, electric vehicles, electrification, um, whole gamut there. This is what we're involved in, uh, as it relates to transportation. And then, um, Title VI and environmental justice is another thing that is important. We, um, on an annual basis, prepare a Title VI report. And, um, we'll be looking to, once again, to do an LEP analysis, which is Limited English Proficiency, uh, that really, you know, looks at, uh, where there may be a need to have documents translated to specific languages to to benefit that segment of the population. Um, freight planning, we're, you know, right now in the process of, uh, doing a survey. And we're going to continue that effort on into the next, uh, federal fiscal year and and complete an actual, uh, freight plan or freight and goods movement study for the region. And then last but not least, um, we've heard from Andy Cozal, uh, earlier. Uh, we're going to continue to be involved in West East Rail, uh, implementation, uh, and the development of the quarter ID and service development plan, uh, along with, uh, continuing our efforts with the Berkshire Flyer as well as Northern Tier Rail effort. Um, the last slide that I want to show is the, um, corresponding budget, uh, for the Unified Planning Work Program. Um, what these numbers really indicate is sort of the level of effort for, uh, the respective, uh, tasks as well as the work elements. Um, a good portion goes to the, uh, management and certification, uh, element. Um, and the planning studies is is clearly the the larger, uh, section that receives, uh, funding for us to actually, you know, do some planning work. Um, and just want to briefly highlight the, uh, D-, uh, the direct expenses. Uh, we've got, uh, monies in here, uh, for traffic counts, uh, microtransit feasibility study, uh, sidewalk feasibility study, and then a small portion for our miscellaneous needs. So, uh, all said and done, um, between personnel time and direct expenses, uh, the UPWP program's out nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-four. Um, with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Doug?
Doug, just, just a point of interest that you had listed in there, the the hydrogen fuel?
Yes.
Um, I think this is an opportunity for BRPC to really be a key player because I know, uh, and I know that you know and Jude Jude knows that the, uh, that the 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 Regional Transportation Group i- has decided that hydrogen fuel buses are much more sensible than, um, electric vehicles at this time because of the the range they need.
Right.
I've also, we were talking about the Highway Superintendent's Association. I've talked to several highway superintendents and they they they're being pushed by the communities, one of the green communities, to use you know, non-fossil fuel, uh, vehicles, but they they can't, the plow trucks can't be, you know, electric. And one of the things that came up in discussion is that with the the grid not being able to take the excess of electrical generation, particularly of the Brody Mountain Project and the Florida Mountain, uh, Project, if the Berkshires wanted to grab onto something to buy the the off-hours, lower demand production of our s- our our wind production in the Berkshires and and create a a regional hydrogen creation, uh, plant. It's a way of storing energy, you know, which which we we don't have a good stored thing. Uh, it it could be a great regional project. And I I think we should look into that, talk to the towns, talk to the, the LPA and get on that because I think that that's where we're going to have to go.
That that is, um, a very good recommendation and I I am noting that. And, um, um, I've, I'll definitely look into pursuing that.
Uh, Sari?
Yes, um, so if a town like Sheffield is interested in, um, looking into bike paths and doing a study, um, has your money been allocated to studies for? Or are you asking for money in order to then work with towns on that type of thing?
Um, I think the answer is yes to both. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, somewhat aware of, uh, Sheffield's interest, uh, in, you know, furthering efforts in terms of bicycle and trail planning. And, uh, uh, one of our staff members, Nick Russo, has has been involved in, uh, a number of conversations. And, you know, um, y- you know, will continue to be involved, uh, in those. But I don't think at at this point, there's, you know, this concept of a of a specific, uh, plan or alignment. But, um, you know, through continued conversations, uh, there certainly is an opportunity to, uh, get that particular segment, um, sort of identified and and give it more attention to get it through the planning station, uh, phases and, uh, ultimately, uh, set it up so that, uh, funding, uh, could be directed towards that.
So should I contact Nick about who he's been working with to date on that?
You, yes, you you can, or, um, I can get your contact information and have him reach out to you.
That'd be great.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Hey, we have a motion, uh, on the floor and it's been seconded. Um, Kate, do you do the roll please?
Diana?
Hi.
Peter? We still have Peter Traub?
Yeah, Peter, but he's muted.
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Pedro?
Hi.
Leanne?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Uh, Kyle? Sam?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Roger?
Hi.
Douglas?
Yes.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Uh, thank you, Fleet, and thank you for us too because, uh, I didn't get a chance to before she left. Um, so, uh, the next order of business is to vote to submit the twenty twenty four, um, uh, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Performance Report. Um, Laura, are you gonna talk about that or? Yes.
Yes, that'll be me, um, if I can get all the screen sharing figured out. Can everybody see a cover slide?
Yes.
For the SEDS? Okay. So you'll remember that, um, in early twenty twenty-three, we got, um, approval from the Federal Economic Development Administration on our five-year Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that covered twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. And we're now poised to submit the twenty twenty-four Annual, uh, Performance Progress Report to the EDA. And in these intervening years, uh, twenty-four through twenty-six, uh, we will each year take a look at, um, the various elements of the SEDS and measure our progress. We'll look at, uh, demographic and economic data and also, um, specifics around the SEDS goals, uh, that we have set for ourselves and also, um, the priority projects that are identified. So, as you can imagine, in the about eighteen months, uh, since the, um, the five-year SEDS was approved, there's not a whole lot of, uh, movement in terms of the data points. But I did want to show you a couple of interesting, um, areas. I won't go through each item in the summary background. Oh, sorry, I need to figure out how to advance my slides here. I have to do it this way. Okay. Um, median household income, uh, we have for a very long time looked just like this, with Berkshire County being the dark blue line at the bottom. Um, and the trends have really followed, uh, very evenly alongside one another. Um, in what I want to make note of, um, in this case is that, uh, in the most recently available data, which covers through twenty twenty-two, the Berkshire County median household income, um, had a a faster, a greater rate of growth, uh, than our comparative geographies. Um, that includes, uh, Massachusetts and the US, but also, um, almost all of the surrounding counties. Um, so you can see that really in action in the way that this section of the line, um, is moving upwards a li- little bit more drastically than it had been doing. Um, over the course of the last ten or twelve years, um, the average annual growth rate has has been pretty steady and has not been, um, showing that kind of impressive growth rate. So we have to start somewhere in catching up with our comparisons. And, um, we're hopeful that this will be the the start of a of a, uh, I guess, a catching up, um, in terms of median household income. When we look at, uh, per capita income, there's a a similar story. Um, the twenty twenty-two per capita income for Berkshire County was forty-five thousand three hundred. It is still lower than Massachusetts and higher, but higher than the United States. Um, where this is a bit more of an encouraging story is that among all of our neighboring counties, Berkshire County had the second highest per capita income, um, in twenty twenty-two, with only Columbia County in New York being higher. Uh, we've also experienced high per capita income growth, both over ti- over the past year and in the long run, which is a bit of, um, strengthening, uh, over the the median household income story. Uh, so we have had Berkshire County's per capita income increased by thirteen point four percent in that one-year span from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Um, in the twenty, since two thousand, our per capita income has increased at an average annual growth rate of three point seven percent. Um, and that's over a twenty-two-year span, higher than both, um, the rates of Massachusetts and the US. Another area that we, uh, need to include in all of our SEDS as well as in our annual reports is, uh, reporting on economic distress criteria. Currently, the EDA, uh, has only two measurements of distress. One is the twenty-four-month unemployment rate, and the other is per capita income and how far the per capita income is from the national average. And I show you this from the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven SEDS. This is what the map as it appeared in the five-year document, um, with data that we that was available at the end of twenty twenty-two. At that time, the entire, uh, county qualified as distressed in terms of its twenty-four-month unemployment rate averages, as well as the individual communities of Adams Beckett, Cheshire Hinsdale, Lennox, North Adams, Pittsfield, and Savoy. And then in terms of per capita income, North Adams and Pittsfield qualified. When we recalculated these numbers, um, using data available through, uh, in terms of unemployment through March of twenty twenty-four, this is what the map looks like now. Um, so we have reduced the number of communities, uh, from eight to two, and the county as a whole no longer qualifies on unemployment rate. Um, per capita income threshold remains, um, at with North Adams and Pittsfield. There's a lot behind those numbers and, um, we're at what's considered full employment. So the, and as is much of the country. So using twenty-four-month unemployment averages, um, is not likely a very good distress measure at this point for anybody. Um, and the EDA is, um, is trying to advance legislation that will allow them to use other criteria to measure distress and will allow all of us to use other criteria to measure distress, including adding median household income, but also some others. And so we're watching that, um, make its way through Congress. Um, I welcome comments on this from Roger or Kyle, who both sit on the SEDS committee. Or I can move on and we can have that conversation after.
I'm good for now.
Okay. Um, we perform a full SWOT analysis, um, during the SEDS. And during our intervening years, we're just asked to take a look at that and see if there's anything significant that we want to make note of that might have changed. Not that what we used to consider as strength is likely to all of a sudden become a weakness, but what were the specifics that we pointed to that, uh, we need to make note of? One, um, that several of our committee men- One, that several of our committee members pointed out is the appearance that the Extreme Model Railroad Museum is not moving forward. On the other hand, the Williams College Museum of Art has announced plans to replace the building with, you know, an amazing expansion. The Pittsfield metropolitan area, or really Berkshire County, was also recognized for the second time in five years as being, having a particularly recognizable arts vibrancy level. And we were actually number one in 2023 amongst small to mid-sized cities, so we make note of that that we could add to the SWOT if we were rewriting it now. We had, at the time of the SEDs writing, mentioned the efforts around school district consolidations, which seem at this time to not be moving forward either. And then we would add, if we were rewriting it now, the appointment of the West East Rail Director, whom we heard from earlier this evening, and the Compass Rail Program itself, which, none of which had really taken such form at the time that we wrote this. We also look at our SEDs goals and document representative activity that is moving the region towards the achievement of those goals. And I will say that throughout all of these, the process of looking at what's happened since the SED, the five-year SEDs was published, has turned up so much activity. I'm making note of the pages so that you can take a look. I really think it's worth everybody reading and being encouraged by how much is going on in the county by all of our partners in advancing these things. I'll do a quick run-through in terms of the Healthy People Goal, which includes things like housing and access to food and lots of other things. If I look at only the medical facility items in that list, we have several, including the North Adams Hospital reopening for inpatient care, the expansions at CHP, the mobile health units that CHP is currently operating, and then the Volunteers in Medicine, or VIM, opening in Pittsfield very recently. There are two pages, as you can see, of other items that have moved us forward in advancing the Healthy People Goal. The Resilient Communities also has a couple of pages of documented activity over the last 12 to 18 months. Just selecting those items that are specific to municipal work. Digital Equity Planning is happening in 15 communities in Berkshire County. We have the highest participation rate in the state in that program through MBI. There are a lot of examples of shared services initiatives that have been launched, including a shared administrator in Washington at Middlefield, shared inspectional services, and a shared HR position in the Northern Berkshire communities. Many communities are participating in cybersecurity training through a state-offered program, and they have formed a working group locally to share best practices and to learn from one another. And there have also been significant upgrades to online permitting software that's used by 21 communities throughout the county. The future-ready workforce. I just selected a few. I want to make note of the Manufacturing Academy that the Berkshire Innovation Center has been running now for a couple of years. They are in their second cohort of upskilling and retraining incumbent workers in manufacturing firms. And they've also recently been designated as an Amazon Web Services Cloud Institute Partner. So they will be hosting workforce training programs conducted by Amazon. BCC and MCLA are offering lots of programs geared towards the needs of our employers throughout the region, but I specifically want to call out the nursing and other medical field-related academic programs that they're offering. And BCC is also, has a long list of programs that they're launching either this spring or later this year, including CDL driver training and HVAC. Picture here is a very future-ready workforce of Brayton Elementary Schools, who visited the BIC's new location in Massmoka for an experience day. Strong business environment, several items that I want to make note of, the Mass Small Business Development Center is a very quiet, I think, partner, but a really impactful one in the region, directly helping business owners and entrepreneurs develop business plans and really prepare to be operating in the economy, and they helped launch 11 startups this year. One Berkshire and Partners, including BRPC, introduced an annual Small Business Expo. It's coming up next week. If anybody wants to sign up, you could still attend. There are 30 or more resource vendors there to meet with and lots of workshops. And that includes onsite translation into Spanish for anybody who is visiting the vendors or wants to attend the workshops. Berkshire Black Economic Council and others have been offering assistance leading to minority Business Enterprise Certification for BIPOC business owners in the region. And then I just picked one of many grant programs that has been running in the last year or so. Downtown Pittsfield, Inc. and PERC facilitated a, what they called a glow-up Business Improvement Grant Program, offering up to $10,000 for physical improvements to businesses that were most impacted by the pandemic. There were several other really great grant programs, sort of micro-grant programs, happening over the last couple of years and still running. And then the robust infrastructure goal, of course, we have to make note of the appointment of a director to the West East Rail Project, that the seasonal Berkshire Flyer is coming back for a third season, micro-transit experiments like the Tri-Town Connector, which has expanded beyond, well beyond, the three original communities. And then Clete mentioned this as well, the Reconnecting Communities Grant received by the City of North Adams in Massmoka. I won't go through this list, but if you were to look at the Priority Projects section in 30, pages 33 through 49, you'd be amazed at the kinds of progress that's being reported by the proponents of our Priority Project list. Lots of construction underway or about to begin, lots of funding secured. And it goes everywhere from food-related to housing to mixed-use to programmatic items, workforce training. And so these were the ones that I, as I was coming through, saw the most concrete progress on, but there's a lot more there. We did have to remove a couple of priority projects. Unfortunately, the Union Block redevelopment in Dalton, which was an example that we had included because it was really exemplified the impact of small housing increases or renovations that can make a difference in rural communities like ours. The manager of that project did not secure the funding that they were looking for, so they've asked for that project to be removed. And then BAMTech in North Adams has also decided to liquidate and to dissolve their operations. We also recently voted in three new projects. One programmatic from the Blackshires Foundation, one from Massmoka, the Creative Campus, and their innovative look at how to repurpose more space and to have a long-term plan for leasing and lease revenue. And then the Northern Berkshire Community Polition Resource Center in North Adams. You can read more about those also in the report that was forwarded to you. So the next steps are for us to make any final updates that we might need to to the draft, as you've seen it, through an endorsement that we're hoping to receive tonight, and then submitting the annual report to EDA in June.
Hey, thank you, Laura. Are there any questions? Comments?
I've got a question. Laura, the two slides you showed with median household income and the 24-month unemployment, there's a relationship there. Can we assume a relationship there?
Between median household income and unemployment?
Between those two slides, meaning that, you know, there are more jobs. I mean, I'm thinking there are more jobs in the community, meaning that so there's an increase in median household income across the county.
Yes, and I think we also have to take into account the labor force participation and the fact that our labor force overall is declining. So there's a pairing, I think, of the jobs versus the available labor and maybe a meeting of that as people are retiring or aging out of the workforce. And over time, it's always important to make note that over time, unemployment rolls will not display the full amount of people not participating in the work.
I mean, the reason I ask really is is sort of housing-related in that there was something, you know, we had a housing study done here in Great Barrington, and there was one stat in there that always sticks with me, and that's that in Great Barrington, the residents here have the ability to pay up to $450 more of the average rent in town. So I always, nobody ever, including, you know, June and Jane from Construct that I asked about this statistic, they didn't give much, you know, much value to it, but I always, it always stuck with me because it feels like it says to me that we have people, you know, in our, at least in my community, that can afford to pay for that type of housing that we desperately need, right? And that there's a lot of them. So when I see it, something, you know, that shows me that there's an increase in the household income across the county, it just kind of makes me think, well, maybe the whole county has the same issue. We've got people that can afford to pay, you know, a market rerent for housing. And so that demand is there, which then leads to my question that I don't think anybody can answer. If, you know, if capitalism really works, how come the demand for housing isn't met? But whatever, that's a whole other thing.
I don't have that answer at the moment. I am encouraged by the increases per capita and median household income, but we're coming from way behind. And the wages in Berkshire County have been depressed for a long time. A part of that is because of the dominance of of industries that are not high-paying in our region, some, right? But also the fact that for a long time, we had a cost of living that, I think, excused low wages or allowed for an excuse for low wages. We don't have the same favorable cost of living anymore. Not to the same degree.
Thanks.
Hey, any other questions? Anybody else?
I just, I don't know whether it was in this part with with the data about a decrease in community college enrollment. But just for those of you who went through the materials, one of the things that we're seeing in Berkshire County is that only about 34% of the jobs in Berkshire County require a college degree. And that's about the percentage of our population that has college degrees. But what is happening is that with Tonic making the transformation to a totally vocational school and Monument Mountain and several other non-tech schools adding career pathways, a lot more families are realizing that certifications rather than degrees may get get them to a less costly credential for employment. And it's working. Some of the areas in our workforce, the dance manufacturing, the healthcare, food trades and so on, are seeing growth in employment of local people. So when we look at a statistic like a decrease in community college associate's enrollment, we have to look at the whole picture. That in itself is not an indicator of where the job workforce is going. BCC, for instance, is putting in all kinds of programs that are non-associate degree programs that lead to credentials.
That's correct, yeah. A big part of that list, in fact, are certificate programs that they submitted to us, which is a shift from what I think they would have reported to us previously.
And, you know, again, they sit on the workforce board where we're getting the grants to do it. So I just don't want people to, you know, look at that decrease in community college associate's degree enrollment as as something's really bad, or if there's a decrease in actual college bachelor's enrollment. If there is, in fact, an increase in the number of students or entering the trades, that's a plus for Berkshire County because that's where our workforce is hurting. So just, just a caveat on that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Good. We have to vote on this. So we have to vote to authorize Laura to submit this to the EDA. And I suspect there might be some corrections between now and then as maybe some more data becomes available. But I would entertain a motion to accept this for submittal pending any corrections that get made.
Motion to submit.
Thank you, Kyle.
Second.
Thanks, Roger. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, could I just say in response to Doug, I think Laura would agree that maybe this is something that we should pay some attention to in next year's report, you know, try to dig more deeply into these data, because I agree with Doug wholeheartedly. The switch from some academic programs to some certification programs is entirely good and is really is what we need. I'm not saying that that is true in every single case, but a lot of that is really a very favorable development.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we vote? Kate, would you?
Yep, starting with Beckett. Diana?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Mary? Pedro?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Buck?
Yes.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sam?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry. Nancy?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Thank you. The next order of business is another vote. This is a very busy meeting. We have to adopt a budget for the FY 2025 fiscal year. The budget is included in the packet. Tom?
Motion to approve.
The budget has been endorsed by the Finance Committee. It was also reviewed by the Executive Committee and recommended to the full commission.
I'll second Doug's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if there are, we can go through it, or it's, I don't think there are any real dramatic changes. Mary Ann, I don't know if you want to highlight anything?
No, I just wanted to say that it was a conservative budget. It's $6 million. It's more than last year. And we have a lot of grants and a lot of applications in if any of those are awarded, which I'm sure there's going to be many of them. We would shift gears and if we have to add staff or, you know, direct expenses, we would, but the budget we have now is conservative and it covers all our expenses. And like Malcolm said, the Finance and the Executive Committee both reviewed it. And we're looking for the commission to adopt it as, per our bylaws, we have to adopt the budget every year.
I'd just like to come, comment that when you review that budget, it really highlights how much important work our PC is doing for the economic health of the county.
Uh, and I would just like to uh, um, reiterate what uh, Mary Anne said. Uh, in my experience, this is a very conservative budget. Uh, the revenue that's shown in the budget is actually contracts the BRPC already has in hand and doesn't even uh, account for anything that might come in during the year. So uh, it's uh, very, very conservative in that sense. So uh, I would recommend endorsement.
And, and one thing I'd like to add, Malcolm, this is very much different than a municipal budget, and that it's not a controlling budget uh, or a limiting budget. It is really just our, our best estimate of our operating, you know, our, our ability to afford to operate.
So uh, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none and seeing no hands, uh, we can proceed to a vote.
Right. Diana?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Leanne?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sam?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Nancy?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Doug?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is also a vote, but not a vote tonight. Um, uh, every year, the um, commission has to authorize uh, the Executive Committee to act on its behalf uh, in, in the interim between meetings. And this has to be voted on by, I think it's at least twenty-two delegates from at least twenty-two of the towns. Uh, so um, a survey monkey has been set up, uh, there's a paper form, an email response, but uh, certainly everybody at this meeting will vote, uh, but uh, um, uh, we need to encourage uh, uh, everybody from all the towns to, to vote on this particular issue.
Right, and so what Kate will be getting out to make it really easy is it'll be an email going out to all the delegates, and uh, you know, just click on that survey monkey. It, it'll be a live link, and hopefully we can get this done within the next couple of days. We'd really like to get it before the end of the, the fiscal year because we're planning to have another executive committee uh, on the very first week of July, so this would be very helpful.
Uh, any questions about that? Hey, let's go on to the next uh, item on the agenda, which is uh, any discussion uh, of the Executive Director's report. Um, does anybody have any questions for Tom? Tom, do you have any points you want to make?
Uh, I only wanted to highlight one item that's not on that uh, that my, my memo, and it really had to do with uh, a, a meeting that was happening yesterday at BCC, a housing listening session for the statewide housing plan. I would encourage people who did, who, if they didn't make it to the meeting, to check out the, the link for the housing plan and provide some comments about uh, what should be in the statewide housing plan. Uh, we can get that information out. Um, I think it'll be very important. And I, I guess I don't have too much else to say. As you can see, we have a pretty good staff and staff did a very good job of explaining things on other elements, so.
Yes, I think, I, I think it's quite notable that Tom didn't have, have to say very much tonight.
It was planned that way, Roger. Thanks.
Good planning. Okay, any, but, any questions for Tom? Then we'll go on to the final uh, item on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for a German.
I move we return.
Thank you, Roger.
A second.
Thanks, Pedro. Um, Kate?
You're muted, Kate.
Yes.
Diana? Peter?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
I think we've lost a few already. Keep going.
Pedro?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Sam? Sheila?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Douglas?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. You're returned.
Yeah.